Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is January the 8th, 2019 here at City Hall at 602. We're here at City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And the Granbury City Council Regular Council Meeting is now called to order. I hope everyone had a great Christmas and started the new year off on the right foot there. I do apologize for not having the meeting on January the 1st, but we decided we'd go ahead and have it the second week. And there will be another meeting next week also, same time, same place, right up here. So we'll get caught up somehow. But do appreciate you coming out to our council meeting tonight. We're going to start out with our invocation led by Paul Runings with Lakeside Baptist Church, and then our pledge allegiance and the Texas pledge led by our own Trish Reiner. So all rise, please.
Good evening. Let's pray together, please. Lord, this beautiful day is just another fresh reminder of your majestic and creative power. And so we say with the psalmist, "Oh, Lord, our Lord, how majestic is your name in all the earth. Your glory is higher than the heavens." When I look at the night sky and see the work of your fingers, the moon and the stars that you set in place, what are we, as mere mortals, that you should think about us? We are just human beings, yet you care for us. You sent your Son as a perfect sacrifice, Lord, for sin, our sin, and we thank you. Lord, we ask your grace and wisdom to fill these who are here tonight, especially these who are charged to represent and lead our city. May their hearts and their minds seek you, seek the best for the city. Thank you for each of them, Lord, as management, staff, and council. As leaders in our community, we thank you for each. Lord, we pray with thanksgiving for this great nation, know how we need and we plead for your grace in wisdom, peace, unity. We pray, Lord, that the elected leaders of this nation will seek you and find solutions quickly which will honor you. And so tonight, Lord, as the Scripture directs us, we commit to work diligently to please the Lord, for our Lord deserves all honor and glory. And we pray these things in the wonderful name of Jesus, our Lord and our Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic, for which it stands: One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the Texas flag.
On our Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
At this time of our meeting, we do move into the citizens' participation to -- I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself here. At this time, we're going to have a presentation that will be presented by Ms. Julia Pennell and our Sheriff Roger Deeds. So if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, all council people, and our attorney who keeps us straight. I appreciate the opportunity to educate those of you that really have not had a chance to sit in and know all the bolts and screws of what we're doing, also the opportunity to share with the TV audience so that they can participate, and for those who are in our audience. We have an opportunity. Some of us citizens got together and decided we wanted the opportunity to gift. Understand that word, "gift," all of our first responders. We hope that they never happen to open this gift and use it, but we want to offer it. And we want you to join us as ambassadors for the cause. Tonight, of course, we have Chief Mitch Galvan, Sheriff Roger Deeds, and I think is Ray Wilson, did he get to represent the firefighters? I am co-chairing with Mel Birdwell. When she came to me, she was very excited about this. And of course, I have a place in my heart for first responders. So when I heard what Chisholm Trail CT 100 does, it benefits all our first responders. We get a call and says, "We have a fallen first responder." What do we do? We say, "How can we help?" That first statement comes back to us normally from the family. "We need your prayers." Then after a short time and shock sets in, the question is, "How do I pay my immediate bills? How do I write the check?" Some of our first responders make less than poverty salary. Some of them work two jobs. And it's not a matter of if some have a little insurance, some have a lot. This is about immediate response. Normally, within 48 hours of a fallen first responder, the family has $50,000. That's more than some of our first responders make in a year. Off duty, it's $25,000. There's loss of limb. There's also educational and scholarship funds for the children. I hope you understood me when I said "all," because the key thing to me in this was, we have a lot of volunteer firefighters. We wanted to make sure, and yes, it covers every volunteer firefighter, every EMS, every state trooper, every police department employee, every sheriff department employee, every BRA employee. We have a chance to tell our heroes, "We have your backs. We want to give you peace of mind." I'm going to ask someone who really knows more than any of us, only one that has experienced in our county, when a fallen officer, when that happens. So I've asked Roger to give you a few minutes or a few sentences on how he feels like this, why it is important to us.
Thank you, Julia. Yeah, in 2013, I unfortunately experienced a loss at Hood County Sheriff's Office. That was a -- in any law enforcement agency's time, that's one of the worst things an administrator could have to experience. So anyway, I went through all of that. And Katie McLean is doing well today. She went through a lot back then. All of us went through a lot. But Chisholm Trail 100 helps get that money out there to the families right away, within 48 hours. So it's a great thing. When I first heard about it, I wanted to try to get it started here in the county. So it looks like we're finally getting to that point. So it's a great opportunity for everybody to be a part of that, and it's a great opportunity for all the first responders of the county. And like Julia said, it's my deputies, it's the law enforcement, you know, clear across the board, and then fire department, EMS, I even count my jailers in all of this. So there's around 400 first responders that this is going to benefit. So it's a great thing. So I hope that everybody can get behind it and help with fundraiser and help get us where we need to be. So thanks for your time.
Thanks, Roger. As you heard Roger say, we have almost 400. And our initial expense that we want to raise is $60,000. And that covers four years. But Mel and I have a goal. We want to do six years. And someone asks us, "Well, what happens when that runs up?" Well, we don't have to do another big fundraiser. We get to join with the regional and help them with volunteers. And they also have other ways that people can become members during that time. So we have a great opportunity here. So, you know, the reality is, I checked, and last year in our country, we lost one law enforcement officer a day during ballots. And if you go over to Memorial Lane, you'll see those flags in the law enforcement at half-mast. We made it a promise that we would fly them at half-mast for any law enforcement person in the United States that we heard about. The last four and a half months, I checked my calendar, it's been at half-mast constantly because we get ready to raise it and someone else loses their life. We get ready to raise it, someone else loses their life. So the reality is, our country is at that point. And so we again say, "This is a gift. We hope that our people here never have to open, but we want to have them ready. We want to be ready." So what we're doing, we're using on January the 24th, and you have a packet. And it has the flyer, the second page is more about CT 100, and then it has a form on the back. That's a vehicle. We're using our event honoring Hood's heroes. That's a vehicle to educate people, to get them involved, and to find out how they can help. So we are selling tables, we are selling sponsorships, we're selling tickets. Someone said, "I can't go. I won't be in town." But they bought four seats so that first responders could go. Because first responders normally don't spend any excess money, if they have it, on going to a benefit. It's going to be a fun chart tonight. Taya Kyle, who is a widow, and will tell you, "I wish I'd had $50,000 immediately." She will be the guest speaker. Great entertainment, more desserts than you could ever hope to eat, and a great live auction. So leave here tonight, taking this with you, council. Give it to a neighbor, give it to a business, give it to someone who you can help. I'm no -- may I dress out here? Normally, you don't. Take this, find out how you can participate. I would like for everyone to leave tonight saying, "Oh, that sounded really nice. That's something we should do." No. It sounds great. It's something we should all do. So you might not believe it, but I do have forms where you can sign up tonight. So thank you. Would you believe that? So I thank you. And Tony, Tony Allen always asks me, "Ms. Julia, are you helping raise money?" Don't you? You always ask me.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, I am. So with Mel Birdwell on board, you know, it's going to be a wonderful evening. So help us help our first responders. Thank you again, City Manager. Chris has jumped on and really been a benefit. Roger and Mitch have gone with us to speak to people. So we have nothing but good things to say about our first responders. So thank you for letting us share.
Thank you, Julia Pennell and Sheriff Roger Deeds. Sounds like a fun event. It sounds like something that's a community is going to get behind. So look forward to it. At this time, we're going to move into the citizens' participation. The City Council provides an opportunity for citizens to present concerns or address issues that are not matters of consideration listed on the posted meeting agenda during the citizens' participation period at one city council meeting per month. Subject to the following rules, a person wishing to address the city council must first register with the city secretary and provide the said information. And I'm not going to go through all of that because the speaker that we have tonight has been a speaker before, and he knows all that. But the city council will allow to receive input and information for the future gen item, but will not be allowed to enter into discussion. The council will allow a maximum of 30 minutes for citizens' participation during the designated council meeting. And we have one gentleman tonight that wishes to speak in the citizens' participation, our own J.C. Campbell.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council and Mr. City Manager, it's neat, it's really a nice of you to give a loud some time for people to get up and speak like this. Before I get started, I wanted to say to you guys that this guy sitting back here that runs the Parks Department, he and his guys did a fantastic job on the Christmas decorations this year. Seems like each year it gets bigger. With that said, on behalf of the Friends of Memorial Lane Board, I would, we would like to make the following report on activities and events at the Memorial Lane site in 2018. All but two members remain on the, remain active on the board from 2018, the original team. While city employees are no longer on the board, Erin McLean oversees all of, any and all activities that we do at the park. This past year, we as a group did the following. Like today, we joined Walmart during, during, excuse me, local law enforcement appreciation week by bringing lunch to 50 of the Granbury Police Department and 80 to the Hood County Sheriff's Department that we fed there for officers and troopers. Walmart furnished all the food. Friends furnished the organization pickup and delivery. And I might say that Ms. Pennell is in good friends with the Walmart people, and so it's a good place. They're very supportive of us. So we now have our own bank account and handle the paver's project. We still put down about 10 to 12 bricks a month. So if you know of someone that needs a brick, it's your option. All you got to do is let Ms. Pennell or someone from the Memorial Lane Group know, and they'll take care of that. The law enforcement, at law enforcement site, we had Texas State Recognition Day event. We had the National Day of Recognition event. And at the military site, we had Memorial Day and Memorial Walk to the Square, 11/11, Veterans' Day. Firefighters' Day of Recognition planned, but it was canceled due to the rain. And I think the people at the county know that too, because the Hood County Library is just about a month and a half behind. But it's the work that we did that was done for the '18 is going to be good for the 2019. So we're ready for that. And all three of them, the 9/11 remembrance ceremony, and I think Mr. Mobley had something to do with that, did you not? Yeah, we appreciate that. We gave out 150 ribbons, 100 Red Poppies, and 25 wooden carved eagles. And I think you all have your wooden carved eagle, do you not? Thank you. We had several cleanup days. The last was in connection with the GISD. The students mulched, pulled weeds, and helped us to do general maintenance at the park. As usual, Friends took an appreciation lunch of pizza with a gift for each member of the park crew in December. They do an amazing job on our parks. So that's another kudo for the Parks Department. This group remains dedicated and works hard to keep the integrity and use of the park in place. And we thank them for that. We thank you for supporting them like you do. A reminder is tomorrow, if you go to Stumpy's, it's a benefit for Friends of the Memorial Lane. So anything you purchase down there, a part of that goes to the Memorial Lane. So please, you support that if you would. We thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you, J.C. Well, that concludes our citizens' participation. We now move into the consent agenda. The item we have on the consent agenda, number one, is to consider approving city council meeting minutes of December 18th, 2018 regular meeting. The second item being consider approving the purchase of a Caterpillar mini excavator and trailer for Holt, is it Holt Cat, in the amount of $66,256. Number three is consider approving the purchase of a 2019 Ford F-750 Versa Lift Bucket Truck from Rush Truck Center in the amount of $191,655.84. And number four, consider adopting Resolution Number 19-01 Designating Authorized Signatories for the contractual documents and documents for requesting funds pertaining to the Texas Community Development Block Grant Award to Provide Sewer Improvements Contract Number 7218171. And this is here again, council, that's administrative stuff. We've talked about that on prior occasions. Number five is to consider adopting Resolution Numbers 19-02 Regarding Civil Rights Policies and Procedures Pertaining to the Texas Community Development Block Grant Award to Provide Sewer Improvement Contract Number 7218171. Once again, administrative stuff there. And also on the two purchases there, both of those were budgeted in our budget, but they came in below that budget. Is that right, Chris?
Yes.
Okay. So there you have the consent agenda, council. Are there any of those items that you wish to pull off the consent agenda or to make changes to or discuss at this time? If none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Greg Corrigan, Mr. Corrigan, and a second by Councilman Reiner, Councilperson Reiner, I'm sorry. Council, any more discussion on these items? Won't get it right someday. If no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move into our deliberation agenda. Our first one being a public hearing and consider approving a request of CRB Asset Management Corporation to preliminary plat and 18.175 acre plat of a green survey. And I'm going to call upon Scott Stopcheck to give us a staff report, if you would, please, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. What we have is a request from CRB Development to plat property, preliminary plat property, little over 18 acres. What's being proposed here on site is a combination of mini warehouse storage and office buildings, all in one recorded planted lot. There is no zoning as it's in the ETJ of the city. It's contiguous to the city, just to the north, northeast of Gemstone. The new phase is going in. It's currently in survey. The engineer of record is Courtney Coats with Topographic Incorporated. CRB Asset Management is the property owner, and Brooks Baker is the surveyor of record. You can see the aerial photography there. This is the preliminary plat is presented to DRC, and that was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is proposed to be on City Granbury Water and Sewer. It's within our service area. It's on UCS Electric. There is no public notification requirements. That is a HADO requirement that's required by state statute, so no notices of consent. As a part of the RC review, DRC noticed this was on Old Granbury Road. Typically, we get the consideration for the additional right-of-way deficiency that's on the thoroughfare plan and the county's thoroughfare plan as well. There's a four-foot dedication as a part of that consistency with the thoroughfare plan. There are no sidewalk requirements as it's within the ETJ outside the corporate boundary. There's a site plan component with this so we can ascertain where the water line loops and the fire lanes are being presented or to tie that in with the plat that's being recorded, hopefully as part of the final plat application in the future. There's an overhead electric as a part of this that needs to be adjusted and relocated. This focuses on the Old Granbury Road portion or the frontage portion showing the water line mains running parallel to Old Granbury Road to the extent to and through requirement. That's part of our subdivision ordinance. The water line's noted in blue. The sewer line's noted in green. You can see that it meets the design requirements of subdivision ordinance. There'll be internal water line loops with hydrants as well. That was presented to DRC, and our building inspectors and our fire inspector has reviewed the concept utility layout. Again, this is the site plan component, and we kind of compare these when evaluating the preliminary plat application. The Planning and Zoning Commission deliberated on this, and I can tell you, after DRC and prior to the P&amp;Z Commission, at the last minute, we got a revision to this that presented as a part of the site plan, some multifamily units to the eastern boundary of this. So staff communicated back to the developer at the time that this was a change that had an impact on the ability of the city to serve and address capacity issues on both sewer and water itself. And then we asked them to go back through DRC. Prior to P&amp;Z, they actually removed these multifamily units and reverted back to what DRC originally submitted. So this preliminary plat and these site plans that are tied to and dovetailed in with the plat review are on its original submitter. They did take the multifamily component off. And I'm going to circle back. That's why you see one of the conditions that you see recommended at P&amp;Z from staff. That was a part of P&amp;Z's motion. Again, there's no variances associated with this, at least design variances to our subdivision ordinance. P&amp;Z deliberated on this and recommended via vote of six to nothing approval as submitted by the applicant with two conditions. Prior to P&amp;Z, there was an outstanding comment on, from the fire inspector regarding their review and ability to look at fire line loops and any kind of ingress egress about the site that they weren't comfortable with. I can tell you, from January 3rd, I got a new memo from the fire inspector saying that they're comfortable with it now, so that condition can be removed. I know on your staff report, it kind of itemizes a conditional denial, and there's a lot of paragraphs there. But in essence, there was two conditions. One being from the fire inspector that they were more comfortable with it. We got a memo from the fire inspector on January 3rd saying that that can be removed. All the other issues can be addressed during detailed plan review and prior to final plat. And then the second condition was a note being placed on the plat. In essence, it states in part that the owner covenants and agrees that additional engineering, revaluation of services on the city's water and sanitary sewer system may be required if, in fact, service demand increases, like if they change their site plan. Again, there's no zoning here, so, and they haven't planted a lot of records. So what's going on here is we want to make sure that if they put additional buildings on there that creates additional demand on our water and sewer, that they agree to submit plans to our engineering and our public works department to make sure that we can reevaluate and we can validate that the design is consistent and that we have capacity on both water and sewer. And the developer was comfortable with placing this note on the plat. This note filed at the county clerk's office will be a covenant running with the land. So if this ever transfers, this is tied to the property, not the owner. So your Planning and Zoning Commission, long and short, recommends approval by a vote of six to nothing approval, conditional denial, in essence, of the plat with the condition that that note be placed on the plat as presented. Be happy to entertain any questions.
So if the council wishes to make a motion on that, even though they were going to remove the fire ones, then they would have to continue to leave the note on, the conditional note?
That's correct, Mayor. The conditional denial with the note being on, and once they present a draft application, a final plat application with that note on there, that condition's met and that we can process the final plat.
I got you. Okay. Thank you, Scott. At this time, this is a public hearing. I'll open up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? None said, I'll move, close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or concerns on this item to Scott or the staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilperson Reiner.
Scott, would you mind going back to where it backs the map, where it backs up to Gemstone?
That would be the aerial photography?
Yes, that one. This is more a comment than a question or concern. If it is a concern. I know that, I actually live in this, in Gemstone, and I've had folks approach me, and I know that this has been resolved since the fact, but there has been significant flooding due to construction in that area on Hudson or just in Opel. And I just want to implore the process to ensure that that will not happen again, because these poor folks bought brand-new houses and immediately had flooding issues. So I just want to remind the folks that are working on this that we need to do extreme due diligence on this process.
We ask Courtney Coats, the design engineer on behalf of the developer, to attend the meeting tonight. So if Courtney is in?
I don't, she's probably aware of it, but just in case she's not, I just want to make sure that that's attended. Is she out there beforehand?
I don't see Courtney, him, in the audience, but we'll.
Him? Okay. I'm sorry. Just a comment.
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Allen.
Kind of on the same lines as your questionnaire. I know Walter Harden had built 40 duplexes out there, and he was having a problem there for a while with the water on the fence. I don't think it ever got inside the fence, but it was really dangerous. So I agree with you 100%. We need to make sure we're not flooding that neighborhood out by doing this. The other thing is, Scott, the question you is, you said electrical lines would need to be moved. Are those our lines or whose lines are those?
They're United's.
Big, big.
United's.
Okay, United's. And it'd be, it's none of our business then. That'd be his, right?
The developer coordinates with the United Co-op Electric Utility, and typically, we get correspondence. If there is any relocation of lines, we'll get correspondence from United that everything on their side has been addressed. And typically, we also get a two-page letter, if there's any work to be done, referencing a contract number that that work is being taken care of.
Okay. I mean, I've seen the pictures and stuff, and it looks nice if it's done right, but I mean, I've seen the pictures and stuff and it looks nice if it's done right, but the other thing is water and sewer. Where does the waterline stop at in the sewer line right now for the city?
So, right, right now, they're roughly terminating, there's kind of a connection point at Gemstone, at Old Granbury Road. And so you can see the connection points along Old Granbury Road where they're tying in with the green and the blue lines and extending them eastward along Old Granbury Road.
So our line's already there.
Yes.
And we got plenty of water. The line's big enough to do what they want to do.
So between the preliminary and the final plat, we still need to do detailed engineering plan review, but there was no question regarding capacity issues. And I know Rick is here, so he may want to respond to this, but to my knowledge, there was no capacity issues that was discussed at DRC.
That's correct. There is a water main right at the corner of that property. It's an eight-inch, runs all along Gemstone, Ashley Oaks. I had plans laid on my desk yesterday for an additional waterline to come off 377 across the car lot. He's tied onto that, to Jerry Durant's property. He's gonna run it up the backside of that as well, so it'll be ample.
Long as they don't change it, we're in good shape.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
That's the way it is today.
Exactly. Thank you, Rick.
And sewer's good too out there, by the way.
Council, any more questions, concerns on this item? If none said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said preliminary plat with the said, pardon? Oh, and then conditional denial, okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the, recommend the conditional denial of the said preliminary plat with the said note.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Councilman Mobley?
Second.
And a second by Councilman Allen. Council, any more discussion on this preliminary plat? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved as said. Our next item, item number seven, is a public hearing to consider approving a request of Travis and Emily Weiss to replat plots nine through 10, block four of the Heritage Heights. And once again, I'm gonna call on Scott to give us a staff report on this item, if you would please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. What we have is a proposal to combine two lots of record into one recorded lot of record. So we're decreasing density, decreasing demand on the infrastructure. It's a replat application, so we're required by state statute to send notices out. Ten notices were sent to adjoining properties within 200 feet. The city at this point receives zero letters either in opposition or support. There's no zoning in this area. It's in our ETJ. This is part of section one, platted in 1977. Again, we're combining lots nine and 10 into one recorded lot, N R. As a part of this proposal, you can see the plat presented. The two lots are basically bisected by a current lot line. It's also contained, along those lot lines, has utility easements. Those easements are proposed to be abandoned as well. The surveyors are required to send notices out to franchise agencies to make sure that they have no infrastructure prior to the abandonment. Those letters were mailed. We received no responses from franchise agencies that they have investments in those easements. So we should be good there. As with most replat applications, we have a laundry list of variances because these were designed to standards that don't meet our urban design standards. We have a variance to 39 and 46 to not upsize the three-inch waterline. We do have a letter from Monarch in our files stating that they, going from the two lots to one, that they have adequate capacity and volume to serve in accordance with TCQ requirements for their CCN. We have a variance to 39A and 46 to not provide fire hydrants within 450 feet. Again, three-inch waterlines, we're not getting fire hydrants on a three-inch line. 39 and 45 to not provide centralized sewer. These are sustained with septic systems, OSSF systems. We have a variance to 31E and 410 to not improve Lomo, Alto Court, Heritage Trail to urban, urban utter sections. These are county standards with bardages. We have a variance to 48 regarding streetlights and we have a variance to 35E regarding double frontage lots. I'll go back and you can see that both the lot of record, both lots actually, front, the cul-de-sac and a street that loops around will access the point on the cul-de-sac. Your Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve all the variances as submitted by the applicant and the replat application as presented. Again, we're decreasing density and demand on the infrastructure and they were in support of it. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing to the public. Anybody wish to speak on this item? I think we do have James Ward out there to answer questions for the council. It can be available to answer anything. He's a surveyor, right? If nobody has any comments, so we'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any comments, questions for the city manager or Scott on this item? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said replat with the said variances.
So moved.
I have a motion by, one of us?
Second.
Councilman Wadley?
[laughing]
And do we have a second?
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley? We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this item, council?
If you argue with us.
If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance number 19-01, approving a request of Kelly Clark for a specific use permit to allow an outdoor amusement center temporary per the zoning ordinance. And the consideration and motion on the specific use permit by council also provides for the procedural compliance for the outdoor events with animals on the city beach. And I'm gonna call upon Scott Sobchak to give us a staff report on that once again.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, this is kind of a two-part application. One addresses the zoning issue, the S U P, for the outdoor event rules on the beach. And the second part is a code ordinance waiver to allow for animals on the beach. We have a code of ordinance that says an affirmative defense is that animals could be allowed on the beach if it's tied to an approved, council-approved permit. So we're recognizing that this S U P have approved tonight is that very permit. Again, this is on the city beach. We've seen this application by Mr. Clark over the course of the last six years. We're not aware of any reported incident over the last number of years regarding this. Property zone like commercial, this type of application can be considered under an S U P in like commercial zone. As a part of this proposal, we have a requirement in our supplemental standards for outdoor amusement centers where if the property itself is located within 300 feet of residential property and the applicant doesn't go and solicit those single-family residential property owner's signatures in support, then it prompts a three-quarter vote. So just like all the other past years, the applicant hasn't gone to solicit those. We haven't, again, had any reported incidents. So he's relying on both planning and zoning and the council to acquire a three-quarter vote plus in order to get this S U P issued. This is the application and again, the site plan, this is the same site plan that we've processed with the S U P in the past. And again, the site plan and the S U P is a precursor to the more detailed event festival permit that's submitted to the city staff. Notices went out within 200 feet. And it's interesting that our notices require 200 feet. They touch all the commercial properties and you can see along the northern line, that commercial frontage along Pearl Street. If you go just a stone's throw beyond that, then you get into the single-family residential and that's where the 300 feet kicks in. So that's kind of the nuance of what's going on here. As of tonight, zero letters have been received in favor and zero have been received in opposition. So we don't have any correspondence against regarding the statutory notices that went Other considerations. So this is that second part of the heading that the mayor read. We have a code of ordinances that basically states in part that no person shall bring or keep a pet or other animal on the city beach property, whether or not the pet or animal is on a leash or otherwise restrained. And then that's subsection two. It's an affirmative defense to prosecution if the animal's on the city beach property in conjunction with an event which has been previously approved by city council. Again, this S U P is that event. And it talks about the event permit, but this S U P is authorizing that event permit. They're kind of tied together here. So we need to recognize that if we vote for the affirmative in the second part of this, that that is the event permit approved by council authorizing that allowance for the animals on the beach. Your Planning and Zoning Commission deliberated on this and by a vote of six to one, voted to approve it with the following conditions, that the term length shall be no greater than those specified on, by the applicant on the application of March 6th through the 20th. Our zoning ordinance has a 14-day cap, so the application ties in with that 14-day cap and that includes build-up and tear-down. The event itself is duly shorter than that. And then the second is the event shall be done in accordance with the city's adopted event festival ordinance and approved event festival permit. It does require a three-quarter vote. And then staff also recommends that in council's motion that we recognize that the S U P is in fact the event permit issued by council to authorize the animals on the beach. So that's my report. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
So can we roll that all in together? Okay, that's right. Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I will open it up to the public and I know Kelly Clark is in the audience to answer any questions to the council also. Anybody in the, in the audience need to, want to talk on this item? No bull riders out there, huh? At this time, I'll close the public hearing. Council, is there any concerns or questions you have on this item? And I will say, every year, this seems to be a really good event and it's well managed. And Kelly, thank you for taking, taking care of this thing and making sure that it stays that way because it's a really good event.
Mayor, I'd like...
Councilman Allen?
Kind of like you, I want to say the same thing.
No, you're not like me.
Yes, sir. And it's, you know, a lot of people don't know this, this election year for the mayor. I think for enough money, we could get him to get on one of them bulls.
Yeah.
You know? And...
I won't even get in the barrel.
There you go. But what I was gonna say was, we've always helped him as a city to unload his stuff, equipment and put it on the, on the beach and bring it back. So I don't know if that was included in the, in the motion or not, or will need to be included in the motion, I'd say. You don't want to talk about Chris?
Yep.
So...
We'll take care of it.
And you're right, we have identified that before, but you know, I mean, no need, but if not, staff will take care of it.
It'd be good to put it on there. Just sue me up there. It's all...
Beam you up, huh? So you're talking about including the setup?
Yeah, the, the work that we've done in the past.
Okay.
Move the equipment onto that sand. We have special tires to move it around better. That's our contribution, I guess, to this tourism event.
Okay, very good. Council, any more discussion and concerns? If none, I will entertain a motion to consider, to adopt ordinance number 1901, approving the request of Kelly Clark for the S U P as stated with the said terms and also to recommend the assistance of the city for the setup.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Councilman Mobley?
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner?
Yee-haw.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any more discussion on that one item? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved.
Mayor, could we also, on the bottom paragraph, recognize that the council approval of the S U P is the subsequent event permit under 104002 F2?
So we just want to note that or just a...
If we could motion on it, please.
Okay. So council, as you stated, we make a motion to consider the compliance on section 1.04.002 of the City of Granbury Code of Ordinance. And we have that motion by Councilperson Reiner?
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corgan? Any more discussion on that one, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is also approved. Thank you, Scott. The next item is a public hearing, considered adopting ordinance number 19-02, approving a request of Carrie and Vicki Riceinger for a specific use permit to allow the operation of a two-guest suite, unhosted bed and breakfast. This property is addressed as 322 West Bridge Street. Once again, I'll call upon Scott to give us a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. This is located on the northeast corner of Thrashen Bridge. It's zoned 8.4. Single-family residential, bed and breakfast are not, not a use allowed by right, but only under the issuance of an S U P. The last S U P that we've had for this expired in 2005. We had one for two guests in 2017 and that expired on the second. So in essence, this is somewhat of a delayed renewal. And looking at our records, we haven't had any incidents with this. It's a two-guest, unhosted. They're not expanding the number of suites in this particular unit. This is the old string fellow Gil Martin house. I was told that it was on the Turoh homes over the course of this last holiday season. You can see the parking there that's available on site. So we do have a parking plan that shows parking in compliance with it, with our ordinance. There's a zoning ordinance matrix that shows the S U P under our 8.4. We do have supplemental standards. By and large, they've been operating in accordance with our zoning ordinance, to our knowledge, for the past number of S U Ps that have been issued by council. Notices were sent out to 14 adjoining property owners. We have not seen any letters either in support or opposition to the request. We also published in the paper as required by state statute. As with the prior S U P, the same conditions are being imposed. Your Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimously by a vote of seven to nothing that the approval of the S U P with the installed striping, which is to be maintained, supplemental standards to be adhered to, like the wired smoke alarms, et cetera. And they issued it for a term of three years from the date of council approval.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? If none, we'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any question or concern on this item? If none said, I'll entertain a motion to approve, or conditionally approve, the S U P with the said conditions.
So moved, Mayor.
And I have a motion by Councilman Allen?
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corgan?
Second.
Council, any more discussion on this item? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number 10. Is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance number 1903, approving a request of the City of Granbury to amend ordinance number 01-819, the City of Granbury zoning ordinance, section 12, the tree preservation definition in section 13.5.7, tree replacement and planting requirements. Once again, I'm gonna call upon Scott Sobchak to do a staff report on that one, if you would please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. The last legislative session, there was a strong push by the legislators to look into pulling the reins in on tree preservation requirements at the municipal level. It was, it was fairly aggressive on the onset, to say the least, when, which was pushed by the governor. But prior to the adoption, the House made some changes to it severely, I won't say severely, but watered it down substantially. What was being proposed initially, that in essence municipalities had no authority to regulate the preservation of trees, that that was more of a property issue for the owner itself and then the municipality should be out of the tree preservation game. What, what ended up passing was House Bill 7, which in essence, like I said, severely watered it down and allowed cities to continue regulating the preservation of trees, but it did not allow them to solely assess a fee. In essence, what it did largely to say was to say if you assessed a fee, you had to allow for a replacement credit avenue as a part of that. Now, our ordinance already allows for that and a lot of municipal ordinance have already had that in it. They just didn't do a fee assessment. So our preference is if you're going to take a calipher inch tree or preserve tree, that you have to offset that with replacement credits. And we see that all the time since we've adopted the tree preservation, probably around... we've adopted the tree preservation probably around 2005 or '07, or whenever it was adopted. So, there's no changes there, but in looking at the technical nuances of the House bill, the House bill itself did propose some changes on how trees are calibrated and measured. And so, what you see is a part of the House bill that was adopted and enrolled, and you can see 12-905 that basically says, a municipality that imposes a tree mitigation fee for removal that's necessary for development of a piece of property must also allow for a person to credit for tree planting. Again, our ordinance does that, so we're fine there. The bottom part of that that's highlighted, that says, "A tree is measured at least two inches in diameter at the point of a shrunt, 4.5 feet above ground." We're not that, we don't have that measurement standard that's adopted in our ordinance, so we need to revise our ordinance on how trees are measured to comport with state law, and that's what's being presented here. So, the only changes that we need to make, that it appears in our tree preservation ordinance, is how it's measured. Again, you can see in 12-3G, we allow for, under the heading "Replacement Tree," again, those replacement credits that are talked about in that new House bill, we need to change how they're measured. We require a three-inch tree right now, and it needs to be changed to two-inch. We require a measurement of 12 inches above grade, that needs to be changed to 4.5 feet in order to comport with state law. Again, those are the only changes that we concede to parallel what the requirements are for House Bill 7. Minor housekeeping issues. So, this was presented to your planning and zoning commission, and your planning and zoning commission recommends approval as presented by you there.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing, I'll once again open the public hearing up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this tree replacement or tree removal? If none said, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any discussion or any questions to Scott or Chris on this item?
I have one to Scott, Mayor.
Councilman Allen.
Our whole city is going to make a change on this.
I can only speak for what we can do in Granbury. I know, I can tell you, we attended the American Planning Association Conference, where all the city planners get together for their accreditation credits every October, and so this House Bill 7 was a big topic of conversation, and all the cities that were represented at that conference, they were all making adjustments in their ordinance to comport with state law, so-
Thing that gets me is, and I don't know, Scott, you're probably absolutely right, but in last one, Jim could tell you, if you go to Austin, Fort Worth, Dallas, Houston, they got a different set of rules. Lot better, easier to build a new home or commercial building than what we got in Hood County or Weatherford or, you know, Johnson County. Just not fair. The only question I got on this deal, if you go up four or five feet, isn't the diameter of the tree going to be larger or smaller?
So, it's two inches at 4.5 feet, and we measure ours three inches at the base, 12 inches above grade, so again, I would suspect, I'm sorry, I would suspect that we may see smaller trees out there, but again, as long as those replacement credits are being equaled out, so if I'm a developer, for example, and I have to replace 17 caliper inches, now I have the option of putting in two-inch caliper trees at 4.5 feet, which may be a little smaller tree, but that doesn't preclude me from putting three-inch or four-inch fewer trees out there.
Yeah.
And still meeting that requirement. So, I think what it does is give the developer a little bit more of an option to hit trees that may be smaller on sale, but still make up those caliper inches, is what I'm seeing.
I think you're right.
And speaking to Austin, I'm familiar with their tree preservation ordinance, they have a canopy requirement, some people have a number of caliper inches, I think that's more commonplace. Austin's pretty draconian, they have a canopy requirement where the aerial canopy has to be vegetated to a certain degree with tree canopy coverage, and so I would disagree that our ordinance is more onerous in any way than Austin's.
That's good.
And I think what he's referring to is some of the energy codes that were adopted in the last legislative session that affected us, but not Tarrant County.
That's right.
So, the high-density counties, you know, lobbied and got them out of that legislation, while rural Texas, in the most part, is having to live with that new energy, which is pretty tough.
Yeah. Well, I was just speaking to the tree ordinance that the City of Austin administers, and it's tough.
I was reading his mind on English. It's scary.
Read good.
Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Question? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said ordinance as presented. And I have that motion by Councilperson Reiner.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next one is item number 11, which is a public hearing and consider adopting ordinance number 19-04 approving a request of the City of Granbury to amend orders number 01-819, the City of Granbury zoning ordinance, Article 12, Section 12.33. Signs, definition, to one, strike the definition of the non-existent buildings and standards commission, and number two, modify language on commercial monument signs and multi-tenant monument signs. And once again, I'm going to call upon Scott to give us a staff report on that one, please.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel.
I'll scratch it.
These are just a couple of really minor housekeeping issues. The first and foremost is under Section 12-3C, sign definitions. We have a definition for Building Standards Commission, and if you read the definition there, it says the sign, that all appeals from the sign ordinance goes to this particular commission. We don't have a Building Standards Commission, we have a Building Standards Board of Appeals, but we don't have something that's expressly termed the Building Standards Commission. And when you look at Article 7, the sign code itself, it states that all interpretations or appeals in Article 7 go to the zoning board of adjustment, not this board. So, again, the inconsistency or the misinformation that's in the definition section, even though it's codified in the body of Article 7, that the variances or the appeals, or the sign code goes to the zoning board of adjustment, we're just carving this out, because this board doesn't exist. The second of which is the definition of commercial monument signs and multi-tenant monument signs. We've got some correspondence from the building department that they would like to see that that last statement be cut out, which is more of a subjective discretionary issue that they do not want to administer. If you look at that last sentence that's stricken through, "The base must be solid unless approved otherwise by the chief building official," the base being of the commercial monument sign, which comes all the way down to the base. They would rather have it black and white, you know, a commercial monument sign is a commercial monument sign, it needs to be constructed as such, and there doesn't need to be any, according to them, administrative latitude to have one individual say that it doesn't need to be built that way. Again, we do have that interpretation or appeals board that's a ZBA, and if it needs to be diverted over to a review board, the ZBA is the proper venue of that. So, those are the two minor changes. Your planning and zoning commission recommends approval as presented by the staff and approved by the planning and zoning commission.
Thank you, Scott. And once again, this is a public hearing, so I'll open that item up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? If none said, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns on this item for Scott or his staff?
I got one, Mayor.
Councilman Allen.
If we take that away from the chief inspector, then it would go to Varens, you said?
The zoning board of adjustment.
And if they turn it down, they got to wait how long?
So, the zoning board of adjustment being a judicial board, the next appeals procedure, so there's, to answer your question directly, they have six months to file another request, so there's a six-month cooling period, or the next step to appeal is ZBA case, they have 10 days to file it with a court of appeals.
So, we got a business that's set there for six months without a sign.
Well, hopefully, the idea there is to build it in compliance with the code and work with the building-
Yeah, sure, but that's what our inspectors are paid for, to make sure it is per code.
And, yeah, file a sign permit and get it properly permitted.
Yeah, what we're trying to clean up is where they look at Jim and say, "Oh, well, you have the ability to say this is okay when it doesn't meet our code." So, it takes in the subjectivity-
I just think you put in a commercial property, that the last thing they put up is their sign almost, and they get out there and they get ready to put the sign up, and you say, "Oh, no, it doesn't pass, well, you won't."
That's exactly what happens.
So, you go forward. Now, you don't have to go, right now, you don't have to go before Varens for six more months later, you can work it out with your inspectors.
They can do that by compliance at any time. What we're saying is, if they comply with the way the ordinance is written, you know, have the monument sign built the way it's supposed to be built, they won't have a problem.
Say we had a problem with this in the past?
Yes.
What happened?
They had to build the sign to meet our code.
Who made them build that sign?
The building official. He did his job.
Before they get their deal?
But he saw this inconsistency, and he doesn't want to be an engineer telling them how to design their sign, that's what it boils down to.
It takes it off of the city.
Yeah, it makes them design the sign instead of our building officials, it's a building official, not an engineer, designing the sign, or approving a faulty sign that may or may not meet code.
Makes sense.
Yeah, it's just something he wanted to clean up. And, you know, as we live, we see more problems with our zoning, and we're working on that, and y'all know that, we've been working on it for a couple of years. This is just one of those cleanups.
Counsel, any more questions or concerns on the signs? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said ordinance of 01-819.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Corgan, and a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number 12 is a public hearing and consider approving a request of Cody Starr for an onsite sewage facility located at 107 Ada Court, and I'm going to call upon Chris Kaufman to give us a report on this, if you would, please, Chris.
Okay, this is another situation where they need to be able to address their onsite sewage facility, which means a septic system, because it does not connect to our organized wastewater system. Rick's been working with these folks on that, and we'll let him take over from here.
Thank you, Chris. Mayor Hewlett, council members, Mr. Kaufman, this is a public hearing to consider approving a request from Mr. Cody Starr for the approval of an onsite sewage facility for his property located at 107 Ada Court. This property is in the city limits. This lot is a little over two acres, it's in the Eagle Crest subdivision, which is located off Highway 51 and north of Loop 567. It's on the west side of Highway 51, at Butts Lake Granbury as well. It's my understanding this subdivision was platted before annexation took place. I believe all of the homes in this subdivision are on septic and/or aerobic systems. There is a, we have a sewer main that is laying in the ditch on Highway 51, is the Abe's Landing force main. The discharge from lift station 38 is a high-pressure force main coming back to our system. I don't want anybody tapping into that, it could be a disaster if that took place, so anyway. So, that is the need for this. Mr. Starr's home is located just inside the gate of this subdivision, and the application for new construction seems to be in order, signed off by myself and our city health officer. The technical information for the permit is in your packet, 3 and Schedule 40 PVC. Victor Ash's site evaluator, and all the specifications from Mr. Ash are included as well. There's a lot of Mr. Starr's property, Eagle Crest Edition Lot Number 5, that shows his property in your packet. There's also a soil site evaluation filled out that says that this is not suitable for a conventional septic system, that's why this is going to be an aerobic system, a three-chamber type aerobic system that has a settling tank, has aerobic tank and a chlorinator as it will be irrigated towards his property behind his home between that and Lake Granbury. And there's an exhibit showing that as well, right behind his new home. There's also an affidavit of the public that was required by ordinance, signed and notarized, and there's a copy of our ordinance out of section 13, talks about sewer lift stations and septic systems, that no future septic system must be approved by the city council, that's why we're having a public hearing here today, and also as well, he has had written a determination that is not feasible to tie on to our public system. Mr. Starr is in, is present tonight, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Rick. This is a public hearing, so at this time I'll open up to the public. Has anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? As Rick stated, Mr. Starr is in the audience for any questions from the council. If none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any question or concern on this item? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said request of Cody Starr for an onsite sewage facility at the said location.
So moved.
And I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corgan. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, Rick. At this time, counsel, I will now declare that the Granbury City Council is convening to open session, and all the members are present. The city council will now go into a closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections, section 551-071, consultation with the attorney, section 551-072, deliberation regarding real property, and section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. Counsel, we will now go into executive session. It was reconvened into open session, no action was taken in executive session. Counsel, is there any more discussion? If no further discussion, this council meeting is adjourned.